It's nine o'clock, so we'll open up a public meeting. To discuss the vacation of a portion of Backus Road. We aren't going to record the meeting just to get accurate minutes to. Put in our records and. Support whatever judgment comes out of this, but. The intent of what we.
Sorry, I can't hear you out. I'm a little heavy hearing aids, so I can't hear you.
Okay. The intent of what we're trying to do is. Close or vacate a. Point one two, just a little over a tenth of a mile section of Backus Road. And this is kind of an overview aerial photo of it. There's currently a gate at the end of the portion that we maintain right here. And it runs from Briarwood Road to that gate. The portion that we. Are talking about trying to maybe vacate is between the gate and the curve here. This is a blown up section of the curve. You can kind of follow the fence lines here as to what the road right of way would be. The intent would be to try to. For at this fence line, just go straight across to the end to maintain this section open. And have this section vacated. Because this is the property that that you own on both sides of this road and then that way this whole thing would be. You could put a gate here or do whatever you wanted to do with this section of the road. And. I mean, there's the the criteria in the book, you know, we we meet the criteria of the law here that. You know, we can vacate a section of road if it's in the public interest and. It does not prevent anyone within two miles of having reasonable access to their property. So that's the reasoning behind what we have established the certificate on. That's in a nutshell what we're trying to do. So this is a public hearing. So if you want to speak for or against it, you're you may at this point.
Oh, of course I'm against it.
I think he's told you that two or three times already.
Actually, I'm kind of brought here kicking and screaming against my will. I you know, I don't want. I'm not into doing this, getting involved. In a big way. It's not a it's not a big deal as I see it, but yet. Somehow my name keeps getting in the newspaper and quite honestly, too often. I'm made to look really bad. It's like Vic says, like he like isn't true maybe. Anyway. You said something about closing the road. I didn't know there was any effort to be closed in the road. You just said vacate or close.
Well.
And what's your letter?
The legal term is the legal term is vacate.
Well, but you just said or close.
I don't know what you mean by close. I mean.
You said it.
I know. I'm just saying the legal term is vacate. I'm just saying whether I use the word close or vacated. I don't know what the intent is to. To vacate this portion of right of way so that.
Well, there's a big difference between closing and vacating. I looked at statutes are big difference between closing and vacating and you're saying you're being really vague on purpose? Is it closing it or vacating it or both?
I just said it's vacating. There is no word close in.
You you said it just now, just today.
There is no word close in the statutes.
So you're not attempting you're not attempting to close it? Are you attempting to close it? Yes or no?
What is your definition of close?
You're using the word close. You you tell me.
Oh, I'm using the word vacate. You're using the word close.
No, you used.
Well, it was in your letter.
And not just in letter.
It was in the second letter and it was in the newspaper.
Run the tape. Run the tape. You just said close or vacate.
Can I get a copy of the letter?
Leave that topic.
The letter that we sent to you.
I'll save you some time. On April the ninth, you sent a letter. A letter from you. I will start the process of closing.
Time out. April the ninth of what year?
April the ninth of two thousand nineteen.
We're not talking about that.
I am. It says right here, I will start the process of closing this section of the road. If you have any objection to closing this section of the road. Closing this section of Backus Road, please let me know. Well, I did let you know. I said I didn't want it closed. I didn't want it vacated. But it says closed again, and you just said closed.
Okay, to clarify, if if you're wanting to refer to a letter that I wrote a year ago, to clarify, the legal term is vacate. I don't know what.
So you're not talking about closing it?
You are me with me by close. I'm talking about vacating it.
You're not talking about closing it?
When I wrote to clarify this letter, when I use the term close in that letter. That's equivalent to me saying vacating. That's my intent. Okay?
You think the two mean the same thing?
Why are we arguing about this? I'm telling you.
Because because it's my role. It's it's my business here.
It goes into our house.
It goes into our house. Now, I want to know, do you consider them the same thing, closing and vacating? Yes or no?
I'm not answering your question. I'm telling you what it means. Close and vacate means that the right of way no longer exists for us to maintain it. The right of way becomes the persons on either side of the road.
Are you attempting to close the road?
Are we on candid camera? I mean, I'm telling you what the difference is in my mind. What I'm telling you, the law says, what I'm telling you my intent was.
You say closing. You're not saying vacate vacate right here. You're saying.
What would you think close means then?
Closing means that you're stopping people from traveling in there, us and anybody else. It says closing.
I mean, you mean like barricading it off?
Someone look up the term closing. I think.
I'm not doing anything other than abolishing. The right of way that exists here for us to maintain this. That would be.
So you're not talking about closing. You're talking about abolishing the right of way. Your right of way, your responsibility. You're not talking about closing, even though you said that you're not talking about that?
I yeah, I've said that four times, five times now. Yes, I'm not talking about barricading this off. I'm not talking about anything other than vacating the right of way.
So you're not really so you're really not talking about closing. Okay, I understand.
So. And the whole, we had a discussion about this a couple of years ago.
A year ago.
And you asked me to look into vacating the entire Backus Road and I did.
I told you if you're not going to maintain it, I might as well maintain it. That's what we said.
And I looked I looked into doing that and I can't because the Sharp family own all this property over here. And they said that they cannot have access to this back portion of property without this road.
That's true.
I I abandoned the idea of vacating this whole thing back.
So you would have vacated the whole thing?
Yeah, I would have if I could have.
Why? Why?
Because you were not are not happy with the way we maintain it.
That's right, I'm not, but I didn't ask you to vacate it.
Yep, you did.
Just take care.
No, I didn't. I said I might as well do it, take care of it myself, if you're not going to take care of it. But then you're saying you would like to have vacated the whole road?
Regardless, well. It serves. The property owners out here. If the Sharps were able to have access to their property from another public road.
So you would have vacated it?
And you were able to have access from the public road. That's the whole purpose of vacating roads. That's why the law exists.
So if I had owned the other side of the road, you would have vacated it?
I can't do it without having the right process.
Well, is this is this what we're going through now?
This is the process, yes.
Is there another process after this or is this is this it? Is it decided today?
No, it's not decided today.
When will it be decided?
Well, my intent was I could have decided it today. Okay? The law says that if I come here and hold a public hearing to vacate a section of a road. And the interested parties, the adjacent property owners or anybody else does not have any objections to it. I could rule on it in a final manner today and it could be taken care of.
Yeah, but I've told you a year ago I didn't want it vacated.
Now.
And I'm telling you today I don't want it vacated.
So now I can't rule on it today. I've got to take your comments under advisement. And I've got to then either rule to let leave it open or.
Does this give me right to have a legal counsel in regard to the next session that you have?
You can have legal counsel anytime you want.
I just don't, you know.
And the reason why, yes, we've done this in many places and most everyone that has property on both sides of a section of road. Want it vacated. They don't want us to have the right of way because they want to do with it what they please. That's why I'm going ahead first. I was doing this for your benefit.
Can you give me examples of that? Of people that do that where you've done this before?
I can. I can look it up and give you examples. Yes, I've done it probably. I I know at least one time in the last three years on a road that if you know where. Wyino's. Winery is in Johnson County, the end of that road is was our road and the property owners back there that owned it wanted it vacated, so I bid it.
They wanted it vacated?
Yes.
I'm talking about they didn't want it vacated. Have you ever done that? Have you ever vacated a road where property owners on both sides lived at the end or had property at the end?
And that's why we're here today.
No, answer my question. You're not. You're refusing to answer my question. Have you ever vacated a road? Where the property owned on both sides and at the end and he refused and he was opposed to it? Have you ever done that?
No, I have not done that.
What?
No, I have not done that. That's why we're here today.
That's right. That's right.
It's a public hearing. That's why you're here to voice your opinion.
Would it surprise you? To find out. That I talked to engineers in six other counties and they've never done it either.
I'm not arguing with you about it.
I'm talking about Alexander, Pulaski, Johnson, Union, Williamson, Polk. Now, Polk County was an engineer. He said the engineer only does financial. I didn't understand it, but just the commissioner says I think. You know, I do all the work and whatever. But anyway, he says, he says you can't really talk to the engineer because all he does is the financial. Whatever that means. But anyway, I asked him. I said, have you ever done it? He said, no. And all of them said, well, why is that being done? We've never done it against anybody's will. All of those people asked said that. Doesn't that strike you odd? It doesn't?
No, because there's a lot of different reasons why folks want things vacated or want things added.
That's right. They said they'd vacated several roads that people requested. Well, I know of roads that have been vacated and I was all for it too.
Well, our discussion a couple of years ago, I was fully under the impression that you would have been okay with this being vacated. Because that's what you told me. I like the way you're doing it. Why don't you just vacate it so I could do it?
I just told you a year ago, you said unless you give me notice. Now, you're 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 backing up on me here. Crawfish is my dad would say. You said that you were under that impression. A year ago, you sent me a letter that said you were in the process of vacating this unless I had an objection. I came to you and I said, this is notice that I do not want it vacated. Well, instead of you taking that, you what did you do? You waited a year later?
I don't have anything in writing from you, first of all, but that conversation that we had. That that conversation that we had last year, you were upset about the condition of this.
I was.
Since that time, we've gone out there and put a bunch of rock on this road and we've straightened it up and got it in shape to where.
Now, when did you do that?
A month ago?
That's right. After all this other stuff happened, just recently happened.
And when am I trying to vacate this? Now, after we did it?
Yeah.
So I I I was under the impression this was what you would want?
No, you weren't. I told you I didn't want it. My failure was is to send you a letter. I didn't send a letter and date it and and make copies of it and have it notarized. I guess that's my. I guess that's my fault, but I should but I told you, you you're admitting, yes, you told me that you didn't want it vacated. Now, you're saying, I thought you wanted it done.
Your exact words that I remember you saying, yeah, I don't want this vacated. Look at the condition of this road. It's terrible.
No, I was addressing your letter you sent to me and you said you were going to. Start this process and I said, no, I don't want it.
I mean logically.
Now, let me let me tell you what's the real truth here. Okay? Now, I've this is not my doing. This is not my doing. I am. I went to the county commissioners, not last not two not yesterday, but the week before that, I went to county commissioners and I tried to get this resolved. I don't. I'm not into doing all this publicly. I I'm a very private person. I do my things. And I try to do a good job of what I do and I try not to upset other people. And I don't. I'm I'm totally opposed to this. So I went to the county commissioners and asked them, is there anything I can do to stop this? And they said. And I said, you mean I can't stop this process? And they said, well, you'll have to attend the hearing. Well, so I so you know, I tried. So then I asked them. And one of the guys, one of the county commissioners has been on the board a long time. And he says, no, he says, I've never heard of anything like that. And he says, we've never done it. He said, I've never even heard of it. So I asked the other one, another person who's been on there several years, and he said, no, he never heard of it. And they hadn't done it here in this county. The other guy was a young guy and just just started and he shook his head and he didn't know either. I'll tell you the real the real reason this has happened. Because you dislike me. And I have proof of I have proof in pictures. Of about four things that you have told me in letters that you have done. I have proof that you have not done them. So now, if you want to continue with this, if if you choose to continue with this, I would love to air it. I have pictures. You don't. I wasn't going to tell you this in advance, but I'll tell you now. I have pictures prior to the damage to the gate and the pole. I have pictures after. The damage to the gate and the pole. I have pictures of the gate and the pole. For example. You say that you and a and we, you said we. We came and further inspected the gate and we found, and I quote, no dents. Scratches. Or scuffs. I think it was dents, scuffs and scratches, boy, you you did it in that order. Dents, scuffs and scratches on the gate. I have pictures of the gate. I have an iPad here and it shows you close up, close up. Many, many, many. Places where the gate is is dented, bent around the post where it's dented, same height as the as the utility pole. I have many, many pictures showing the damage like every month. The damages to how how bad the road is to pass and you're telling me we graded it multiple times in two year in the last two years. I have it every month, same erosion. Same bad spots. Now, do you want me to air all this? Do you want me to? You want me to go in front of people and tell all this?
You have before.
I haven't.
And this public hearing has nothing to do with that.
Yes, it does. It has everything to do with it. I just said to the reason you're doing this is you're taking you're you're obviously doing something that's just almost unheard. Well, I never. I thought, well, after calling six counties, why would I call another one? And they all said they'd never heard of such a thing. And they wanted to know, well, why would you do that? And they say, yeah, we're friends with Joe. Well, of course they are. You all do the same thing. Well, you have meetings, go together, you know one another. And I said to them, I'm not going to use names to just tell me, have you ever done something like this? You ever heard of it? Well, obviously they said, no. Well, then they wanted to know, why would it? Why would this? Why would this take place? You know, there must be some really bad blood here. Have I ever caused you any 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 real difficulty other than saying to you that I needed work on my roads? Have I ever done anything to you?
This is a tenth of a mile section of road that is basically your driveway.
That's right.
There is nobody in the public that. Has to access back here. As a matter of fact, nobody ought even be back here.
We have people that come.
What if we sold property on the sides of that?
What?
What if we sold property?
Yeah, one of the one of those.
What if you sold property on the side of the road? I couldn't do it.
One of the engineers says, one of the engineers says, you don't want to do this. And I said, no, I don't. And he says, because if at later date, he says, you want to divide this property up with your kids or with. You want to sell this property and let's say you divided it up into four sections there. He says, some of them would want a public road. Some of them wouldn't. He says, you're really getting yourself into a bind here. And he says, it's going to cheapen your property. Well, obviously it's going to cheapen my property. You're trying to you're trying to give me more responsibility. I'm an old man. I've I've already got. Look, if you'll look here, if I may show you, if you'll look here. This road from right here to here is kept up really well. If you'll notice, there's a really good road here that's kept up really well. That is as much road as what you've got to maintain. I've already got a lot of responsibility. If you act like I don't know anything about roads. I do this by myself. I take care of this by myself. So I know something about roads. I know when they need to be repaired. Whenever I come to you, it's because they haven't been haven't been graded in years. Time went by. Just just let's take recent history here. If you can call three years recent, but this all has a bearing on what's happening here. Time went by and the road was really bad. And I said to my wife, I said, they haven't graded this road in twelve or eighteen months. I said, let's see how long it takes for them to grade the road. Well, you really would think that next week or next month that they'd be grading the road. No, nope. Time went on, time went on, time went on, time went on. Three years went by, approximately three years. So when I come to you, I said, my road hasn't been graded in three years. So I go back home. And that's I get home around noon and shortly after I hear the grader operating operated. So after I talked to you, you sent the grader down there. Now, you say in the letter that two years prior to the damage to the gate, that you had graded it multiple times. Joe, Joe, no, you Joe, I've got pictures now. I don't. I don't want to make you look bad. I'm trying to. I I don't even want to bring this up. You're the one that's dragging me into it. I am saying, if you're going to drag me into it, then I'm going to show all this stuff.
You can show that to whoever you want to show it to.
I will, if you if this is what you demand.
I'm trying to do something as a service to the public.
How can this be a service? Who? How does this help the public?
How?
Yeah.
Because this is basically a tenth of a mile of a road that is more or less on your property, serves as your driveway.
Well, the public is the rest of the road, my driveway?
That does does not need to access this portion of ground. Who who in the public needs to come back here? Does anybody?
Well, we have people that come to our house.
Lord, there's people all over the county like that. What are you talking about?
So.
There's hundreds of people in this county.
Anybody in the county, you want coming back here?
What?
Anybody in the county, you want coming back here?
Well, they do if they want to.
I didn't say it, but yeah, they can play want to.
But you're acting like this is the only one in the county. There's hundreds of places like that where people live on roads similar to that. And why are you going to close mine? Or or vacate it?
Most of all of them have multiple property owners at the end. I can't close them.
Well, some of them don't. Some of them don't.
The ones that don't ask me to close them. That's why I'm doing this for you.
I didn't ask you to close it. You're doing this against my will, Joe.
And it also helps us out in the fact that.
Joe, you're missing something here. They're requesting it. I didn't request it, Joe.
That's fine. I understand that. That's why we're having this public hearing so that you can voice.
And never before has it been done in the county and never has it been done in these other six counties. These are joining counties.
Never is a very strong word.
It is, and that's what they said.
Have you researched all of that?
I didn't. I asked, Joe.
Have you have you even researched that it's never been done in this county? I've been here for.
I asked your commissioners if they'd ever heard of it. I didn't say hadn't. I asked them if they'd ever heard of it. They said, no.
Well, that is a very that's about as vague as you can get there if they've ever heard of it.
Vague? I don't understand. That's very, that's a simple question.
Why could you say it's never been done?
I asked them, have you ever heard of it? That's a simple question. I could have asked you that.
And they've never heard of it. That doesn't mean it's never been done.
I asked you that as a matter of fact. And you said, no. That's what they said. They never heard of it.
I've never said it. I never heard of it. I said, I never did it.
You never did. Well, they said they had never done it and had never heard of it being done. And I asked.
They don't do it.
I asked exactly that.
It's not their job to do it.
Just a minute, Joe. I asked the exact same question of the other highway engineers and they had not heard of it and they had not done. Joe.
That's what you said.
You're hanging out there on a ruling.
I'm going to ask my county engineer friends too and see if they've ever heard of it, said of it. I may get a different answer.
You're who?
My other county engineer friends that are in the counties around them, if they've ever done it or heard of it.
You're not friends with these people? These six? Should I have called more counties? Do you want me to call more counties?
I don't want you to do anything. I just wanted you to come here today to.
That's why I'm that's why we're here, Joe.
To tell me, one way or the other, if you don't support this, I can take your comments under advisement and I can make a ruling on it.
I also have a lawyer, a paper here saying the lawyer that this shouldn't have been done.
You want to submit that? Do you want to submit it to us or?
That's why I'm asking, what's the process? What? How far along are you willing to push this? And why are you doing it?
I was doing it to help you.
To help you? Well, if I'm opposed to it, then you wouldn't be helping me, would you? By definition, if I'm opposed to it.
You've made that very clear today.
If I'm opposed to it, then if you're doing this against my will, how can you? How can you say that that's to help me?
I I started this process to do it to help you. Now I know it's against your will. I can take that under advisement.
And I told you a year ago it was against my will. Don't forget that, Joe.
We went over this already.
What?
We went over this already.
We did, and you're forgetting it. I told you last year.
A year and a half ago, you asked me to close the entire thing.
No, no, you sent me a letter.
Because you're unhappy with the way we did this.
Wait, wait, I'll show you. You sent me a letter and you said you were going to close it a year ago.
I know I did, but you said that you did not want it vacated in that kind of shake.
No, 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 Joe. No, 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 no. No, no, Joe. Not true. Not true. Not true.
I'm not going to go over as the who. What you said and what I say a year ago.
You're not going to? I've got it on. I've got it in writing. That you were going to close the road and you said unless I know the fact.
I don't have any writing back saying that you didn't want it.
No, I didn't. I said I made that mistake. I won't. I won't make that.
And now you're saying something different than you told you last year.
No, I'm not saying anything different.
You are.
I have not said one thing different. You're the one saying it different.
Yes, you are.
You're the one saying it different. You're saying you're saying that I only agreed to it if you would fix it. No, that's not true. That's not true. I'm very opposed to it.
Nobody in the county that has ever had property on both sides of a road. Has ever voiced their opinion that they're against being it closed to me. Nobody has ever done that because most people want to keep the public off of their land. They they want to put either gates up to where they can't access.
So they're in agreement with what you want to do.
That's why I went with this process because I.
They're those people are in agreement with what you want to do. But whenever you have someone who's in disagreement, see, that's what the other. That's what the other engineer said. Well, yeah, if people are in agreement, we would do it. But if if people are in disagreement, we don't do it. Joe, you're you're caught here. I've got all kinds of evidence showing that all the things that you've been saying and.
No, it doesn't.
And I can present it. I can show it right in the day.
I mean, just like the gate for instance.
If you want to say, let's show it. Let me show it to you.
You're driving like we've never. What's it matter? We paid you for the gate.
Let's do this simple. Let's do this simple.
It's the the lies that I'm told about it to begin.
Let's do this simple.
The gate was bent.
All right.
I could not prove we didn't.
We on on April the ninth, a month after this happened, approximately, we inspected the gate more closely and the gate did not have any dents. Scuffs or scratches to indicate that a grader struck and bent the gate. All right, let's just let's just take a minute here. Just give me a minute. I don't. I'm I don't. They filming this too? Are you filming this?
Oh, yeah, it's recording, yeah.
You are filming? Look, you see that right there? That's the gate in question. He sent me pictures of the gate, but it doesn't show clearly on his pictures. But here's a here's a look at that. There's no there's no dents.
Well, that's not the only one.
No, that's that's a picture of the gate. Look right here. See that right there? That spot there? And I'm going to show you the others here. Look at this spot, Joe. Is that a dent or a scratch or a or a scuff?
That's a dent on top of the gate.
Is it? That's where the grader blade hit because it's same level as what on the opposite side where you get the pole. Look, Joe, is that a dent?
A grader?
Yes or no? Yes or no?
You'd make a good attorney.
A good attorney. I'm not here to be an attorney. I'm here. I'm here to prove. I'm here to prove what's going on.
Because you're asking me a question, it's irrelevant. I guess it's a dent.
No, it's not irrelevant. Look.
But it's not a dent where a grader would hit it.
We inspected the gate more closely and the gate did not have any dents, scuffs or scratches. To indicate to indicate that a grader struck and bent the gate.
Where a grader would hit it. Yes, that's not where a grader would hit it.
Yes, it is. That's exactly where it hit it. And it's where you hit the pole on the other side, but prime of face evidence. You hit the pole on the other side at that level.
It's irrelevant because.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. You're you jumped around on me, Joe. You said that's not where a grader would hit it. It's the same height as the pole on the other side where you hit it. Now, wait a minute. If it's the same height as the pole on the other side as where you hit the gate. That kind of that kind of destroys your argument, doesn't it?
How could a grader hit a pole on top of it when another pole is right there?
It's straight across it, I think, Joe. Who else could have done that? And you said, look how bent the gate is. Let me show you some more pictures. I've got.
I understand it's bent. That's why I said I couldn't prove it. I understand it's bent. That's why I said I couldn't prove it.
Look, there's another picture of the same place. Another picture of the same place.
This whole discussion is just wasting time.
No, well, you wasted my time, believe me. I spent about four days on this. I want to show, I want people to know, you're, you're demanding things on me. Well, if you're going to, I'm going to show you. Look how that gate's bent around that post there. It's bent around the post. Look at the top of the gate, how it's, how it's crimped.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand.
We inspected the gate more closely and the gate, I'm just using one example today because this is quick. And I'm telling you, I've got all kinds of examples in regard to the damage to the road and, and your grading. We inspected the gate more closely and the gate did not have any dents, scuffs or scratches to indicate that a grader struck and bent the gate.
And I stand behind that.
How can you, Joe?
There are dents on the gate.
How can you, Joe?
There are, the gate is bent, but it does not indicate
it, is it?
Damage that a grader would do to it.
You didn't say that. You said there's no.
Yes, I did. Well, because you're interpreting it different than what I was interpreting it.
It does not have any dents, scuffs or scratches to indicate that a grader struck.
Indicate that a grader struck it.
I say it does. The grader.
Well, you say it does. I say it doesn't.
Okay, okay. So you're going to take that avenue. Okay, we'll leave that. You also said that you don't have a turnaround. Look at that right there. Does that look like a turnaround? That's where the gate was at. That's twenty foot.
I don't know what you're talking about, a turnaround.
You're, you're complaining that the reason you're, you're closing this is because you don't have a turnaround.
There's no turnaround down here.
But the gate's never closed.
Wait a minute. You mean I have to provide a turnaround here with three hundred and forty-three feet?
How, how would you expect us to grade this section of road if we can't turn around?
It's been graded for fifty years, Joe. It's been, that's been the county's responsibility for over fifty years. And
And it is.
I didn't tell you this, I didn't tell you this, but a highway, uh, the, the, at that time, they called it the superintendent highways. He came down, I think it was Taylor, Clyde Taylor. And he said, at that time, they went all the way into my, all the way into where the barn's at. And so he said, you know, would you be interested in, in establishing a court here where we're responsible and where you're responsible? I said, yeah. So we went up there and he said, how about along here somewhere? I said, that'd be great. That's what we did. Fifty years ago, Joe. Fifty years ago. It's a matter of law and you're wanting to go, you're wanting to change the law.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
This is the law.
Huh? That isn't lawful?
Vacating roads is according to the law. That's what we're here today for.
That's right.
To follow the law.
Exactly.
I'm not trying to go against the law.
Exactly right. That's what.
Exactly. You're right. You're agreeing with me on that. Great.
You're changing, you're wanting to change the law.
No, I'm, I'm trying to follow the law to do this.
No, you're not. You're trying to change something that has been established.
You just admitted I was trying to follow the law.
You're trying to change something that's been established for fifty years.
Things change, Mr. Fix.
What?
Things change.
Things change. What has changed? I think what's changed.
Right away, you can abolish right of way according to the law.
I'm going to show you something else. I'll tell, I'll tell you what's changed. Whenever I bought this property, when I bought this property, there was fences all along here. Okay? All along here. I made a cutout. It's hard to see here and I think you see a few bales of hay there. I made a, I made a place there and an opening wide enough that I could get in and out of there and put hay bales. You all have used that as a turnaround. Now you're saying, oh, we want to close this here because there's no convenient turnaround. And you're saying this is a dead end road. Now, my definition of a dead end road, and I know what a dead end road is, is that you can't go any further. Look, you can go further. That's not a dead end road.
That's your driveway.
That's not a dead end road. You said in the paper.
This is a dead end road. The road stops right here. It's a dead end road.
It does?
Yes.
The road, look, rest of, look, does the road stop right there? And you say it's gated. You, and you indicated that there's a gate across the road. Is there a gate across the road? Has that ever been across the road?
Well, I don't go out there and check it. There's a gate there. Yes.
All right, now you're backing up again. You say it was a gate there. Well, you know, there's a gate there. You know why? Because I happen to farm and I have livestock and we have to move them back and forth. We own property on both sides. We have to move them back and forth. I have to shut the gate, keep them going to Paducah.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's no gate across the road, Joe, and there's no difficulty turning around three hundred and forty-three feet. You have a great place. You can turn around anywhere. There's no fences on this side.
If I come in here and turn around here, how am I going to get back here?
You, you back in there. They've been doing it for fifty years and the graders years ago, I don't know if they even had power steering. I'm telling you this, they didn't have doors, they didn't have a windshield. They're old, antiquated graders and they managed and they had no problem. Now you've all sitting in comfortable, air conditioning and probably a radio and you're having trouble. Joe, give me a break, Joe, give me a break. You're doing this because you don't like me and you're probably dislike me more. I, I'm defending myself. I'm telling everybody, I'm defending myself. You drug me here against my will. I went to the board, tried to prevent coming here today.
I didn't drag you here.
All right, you call it what you want. You, if you're doing something to someone and, and, and the board member says, you better attend that meeting. The other engineers in the other county says, you better attend that meeting. Well, that's pretty much like dragging you there. And what do you call it?
I call it a public hearing to vacate a section of road.
You sure put, you sure put sugar and stuff on top of everything. Especially when they're, you know, you can see, Joe, you're, all this is just, this is just, it, it makes you look bad. And I didn't, I, I didn't do this to you. You did it to yourself. Ah, this is a friend of mine. Uh, turns out there's not really anybody else here. Uh, the meeting's already started and, uh, shame, but anyway, this is a friend of mine who helps me on the farm occasionally and, and correct me if I say it is wrong and you'll say whatever you want to me. But she comes down to my place at least once a week and travels the road. And, uh, I think she can tell you that there's places in the road where she often has to stop and start, you know, it's just that bad. So tell him how bad the road is over this past five or six years.
I mean, it gets to where you're taking it real slow so you're not damaging your vehicle and there's some potholes that, and there's some places where it's eroded that you're worried you might go off the side of the road. But it, it is the only access and, um, her mom lives at the end of that road and she has to be able to get there to take care of her. She's nine.
She's a teenager three times a day. She doesn't want it done. This, this, this might strike you funny. I have a dad in a nursing home who, uh, has been a part of my life, as you, as you well may imagine, all, all of my life, over a hundred years old, a hundred and six months to be exact. And I told him about this and he said, oh, he said, why in the world would they be doing that to you? He says, he says, I'm just kidding. He said, I wish I could go. And I said, well, you can't, obviously, Dad. But he says, he says, why are they doing this to you? So I told him. And like I told the other engineers in the other counties, they asked me, why do you think this is happening? I told them.
Well, I think that one of the things that needs to be considered is that it would be putting Bonnie at risk, at serious risk.
Who's Bonnie per se?
Bonnie is Terry's mother who lives at the end of that road in her nineties.
Well, in the middle of the road.
Down here?
And Terry.
It's the middle of the road.
Terry has to be able to get to her.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, this, what we're doing has, has no effect on anything.
It has to do with Terry being able to get from her house to her mother.
It has nothing to do with that. We're vacating a section of right of way here. It's, all that means is this right of way.
Well, you show me where Mr. Fix's house is and Bonnie's house is.
Right there? Right there.
So when you're vacating this, this section of right of way, you are vacating a spot between the two houses. Is that correct?
Vacating means that we are turning over our rights to the right of way to where the property is.
That you're no longer maintaining it.
That's right. We don't maintain any of this.
Well, I think when you decide that you're not going to do that, that you need to take into consideration the risk that Terry could get to her mother from her house and this woman's ninety-seven years old. That's a bit of liability.
There's no risk.
There's certainly a risk if you're not maintaining a road that she can get from there to her mother.
It's their driveway. This is their driveway.
That road is not their driveway.
This is just an extension of their driveway that we happen to maintain right now.
If you no longer maintain this, okay, and you have been maintaining it for years, that means that you are no longer maintaining a road that connects them to her. And I would say that leaves you with some liability.
Well, that's wrong, but okay. I'll take that under advisement as well, but that is not the correct interpretation.
How have you found the road over the past five or six years? Have you been coming, have you been coming every week?
Barely, the road is barely passable.
Overall, then, almost the entire time or not? Or just occasionally?
No, I would say at least over the last year. Now, it's nice now. It's, it's very usable now, but, but there were traffic cones put out there so that we wouldn't drive too close to the one edge and fall off the doggone road.
You know what? The road has been terrible. And I'll take, I've got pictures, you know, not just a picture, I have like twenty pictures each date. And it shows, you know, in most cases, it shows like a, a large portion of the road. In some cases, it shows just this one hill that, that became a real matter of contention. Let, let, let me talk about that just for a minute. You state in this letter, there's so many things I could go over, but let me just say this. This section of road did not appear to, we're talking about this, this portion here, that you didn't grade. Now I should say the news media, ah, I hate, I hate this going on, but whenever you came to, whenever the person hit the gate and the pole, he obviously panicked and ran to town because he didn't finish grading. Well, in the fifty years we've had the road, if we've never not had the entire road graded, I mean, every time it's been graded, every part of it was graded. Well, a person, unfortunately, and I'm sorry he did, I haven't asked who did it. I don't want to know who did it, but he, he did this damage and he panicked. Well, the board member said, yeah, it's obvious what he did. So then you say, in your defense, this is the way you operate. This section of road did not appear to be rutted or potholed, so therefore we didn't grade it at that time. I have, I think, I'm going to say seven or eight different periods, starting a month after that, showing all the damage on that road. If I had known I was going to be here today, I would have been taking pictures every day because that's the way I have to deal with you.
It's been really bad. I would like to ask why this is such an issue, that that little piece of road is such an issue that you need to make it.
You just tell things, Joe, that are so untrue. Now, I was a guidance counselor for, for twenty-five years in Massach County. And I didn't, I had a lot of success and never, you know, I was able to solve problems. I mean, we had a lot of them. And in fact, administration, I have letters showing that, you know, you were very great at, very good at problem solving. Well, I can solve difficulties like this, but why in the world do you just intend to do this? Now I started to say, you know, when someone tells you something that they know is false and you know is false, how does that make you feel? If that happens to you over and over and over, how does that make you feel? Makes you feel bad, doesn't it? Because it's embarrassing. Actually, it's embarrassing. You tell me things that are obviously false. Not just occasionally, I'm talking, I'm talking about just nearly every time I turn around, you're telling me something that is not.
Time out. Why are we discussing this?
Because that's why you're doing the job, this thing, Joe.
I'm, this is not a psychological profile of the county.
I'm not trying to give a psych.
You're trying to tell me I lied to you all the time, untrue to you all the time.
The other engineers asked me, the other engineer said, why is he doing this?
We're looking for a motive. We're looking for a motive of why you're closing it.
To have a public hearing on vacating this section of the road.
Joe, the other engineer wanted to know why, why are you doing this?
If you are against it, then you voiced your opinion of why you're against it. That's all we're here for.
Well, what is the motivation to do it?
Does that mean that you're going to drop this thing? You, you can say right now, yeah, we'll drop it.
What, you making accusations against me about lying to you all the time is not going to help one way or the other on this situation.
I got to prove, I can prove all this, Joe. Do we have to go to another meeting to prove it and take more of my time and more of your time? The time that you spent at arguing with me, you could have, you could have, and money that's been wasted, you could have put rock on my road. But I, I said a while ago, whenever somebody just tells you a fabrication over and over and over and you know and they know that it's bad, it's, it's just demeaning. It's just so demeaning. Now how do you expect me to have involvement with you whenever you're doing this to me? How in the world can I have any kind of relationship with you? Answer me that. Just how can I?
I have no idea what you're asking me.
I'm going to ask you, what is the motivation? What is the purpose of closing that section of the road, of vacating that section of the road? What is your?
The purpose is to release the right of way on it so that the entire property is Mr. Fix.
But why do you want to do that? What is this, what is the problem here that you, you want to change the status quo?
But he asked me to do it years ago, a year or two ago. He'd actually asked me to go ahead and vacate the whole thing and I can't. So I was going to vacate just this portion.
Well, if he no longer desires that and he doesn't remember asking for that, well, then why would we be doing it?
That's why we are here today. How, I didn't know he was this set against it be- before I scheduled the public hearing.
So is this the end of it?
Does this clear it up?
Does this clear it up?
It can't, it clears up the fact that you're against it, yes.
Does it clear up this and you're not going to proceed with it?
A straight answer.
I told you, I will have to discuss the rest of this with the state's attorney and I will have to make a ruling on it.
Why do you have to discuss this with the state's attorney?
Because that's the law.
Well, no, it's your decision to do this.
Did you discuss closing it with the state's attorney?
You decide to do it, you can decide not to do it. Wouldn't you think? If you can decide to do it, can't you decide not to do it?
Did you discuss vacating it with the state's attorney?
Yeah.
And?
I have before, but I have to discuss what happens at this public hearing with him before I can make a ruling.
Well, there's a lot of reasons why it shouldn't be done.
And that's why we're here today. Well, I'm here to get the reasons as to why you don't want it done. I don't want reasons that, okay, you lie to me all the time and you're untrue to me all the time and you have a thing to this road all the time. That's not reasons. The reasons are why do you not want it vacated? That's what we're here for.
I don't want to keep it up.
We have an elderly woman who need, we need access to her in a hurry, in a hurry.
You're not, we're not, we're not.
You also have an elderly man. I'm, I'm, I'm almost passive of stuff like this. This is the wrong time in my life to maybe want to take on more job. I'm already paying taxes to get to, for you all to take care of it. Why am I going to eliminate part of the road? It's your responsibility. That's been your responsibility for fifty years. Joe, let's get real here. And don't, and don't hide behind, I've got to talk to the state's attorney. Just tell us, is this, is this the end of it or not? Joe.
I've already told you it's not the end of it.
What?
I've already told you it's not the end of it.
Oh, it isn't?
It's not. I've got to follow the due process of the law in this. I shouldn't even have started this process if it was going to be this much of a.
That's right. I told you a year ago not to start. I went to the board and told them not to start it. I tried to beg off, yeah, uh, eight days ago. Joe, I've done everything I can to prevent it. I told them I didn't want it.
Eight days ago, I've already started the process. I couldn't.
A year ago, you had not started it.
A year ago, you told me you had started the process.
A year ago, you had not started the process and you knew that they objected to it.
A year ago, you sent me a letter.
He told me that he did not want it done because of the condition of the road. Here about a month ago, we fixed up the road to a point where anyone would be proud of.
Do you know why that was done, Joe? Did you do it because out of, out of goodness of your heart? You did it because it needed to be done? Answer me, Joe. Did you do it because it needed to be done? No, no, I'll answer it for you. I went to the, well, it's the truth.
You know better than I do. Go ahead, answer.
I'll tell you why. You don't know. I went to, to one of your county commissioners, my wife and I during the summer. And we met with him two or three times and we explained to him all the things that need to be done. And he says, I'll take care of it. First time, he says, I'll take care of it. Well, it wasn't. So about a month later, we had another meeting with him. And he says, yeah, he said, I, he said, you know, it hasn't gotten done. And I said, no, it hasn't. And he said, I'll take care of it. Joe, you would never have done it. It's just, you would never have done it, Joe. They, the county commissioner that I leaned on a little bit, a friend of mine, he's the one that did this. Joe, everything you're saying here, if, how could anybody think that you're not doing this just for, for your own pleasure?
May I remind you, you're a public servant.
What?
You are a public servant. You're paid by the tax money to take care of these roads and to take care of these people and keep them contained. This is way, way, way out of line of your job description.
Absolutely not. This is not out of line. This is according to the law.
Fighting with, fighting with Mr. Fix, arguing with Mr. Fix, telling lies about what's been done and what hasn't been done, that is not your job descri- description. That is a violation of the trust that the people put in you.
That is completely untrue.
I don't think it's untrue. I think your, I think personal vendettas and personal problems here are not part
That is untrue too.
Of your job description.
That is untrue too.
Oh, you're allowed to, to vacate a road because you don't like somebody or you don't like what they have to say?
This certificate says nothing about me vacating a road because I don't like Mr. Fick.
No, but.
My reference is six oh five, ILCF, five slash six dash three oh three to three oh five.
Okay, you told me you're doing it because he asked for it and now you're telling me you're doing it for what reason? Because that's the last reason you gave me was that he requested it.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's why you're doing it?
I was doing it because he asked me to a while back, number one.
I just want to make this clean. That's why you're doing it because you requested it.
Whenever we get rid of sections of road in the road district, that lowers our responsibility as to what we have to maintain. We have eight people that work here for the entire county. Whenever we can get rid of small dead end sections of road, that relieves some of our responsibility as a highway department.
Okay, so there, Mr. Fick asked for it and you're doing it to get out of the responsibility of maintaining it?
That relieves some of the financial responsibility as well.
Is that, am I, am I accurate? Mr. Fick requested it and you're doing it because you want to get out of the responsibility of maintaining it? Is that correct?
You haven't spent much on that section, I'm gonna tell you.
Could you please tell me if that's correct?
Well, that's my responsibility.
I really need a plain state.
Those are two reasons, yes.
Yeah, but you're adding to my responsibility, Joe. That's why I'm here. You surely realize that. If you're, if, if you're taking the responsibility away on your part, why are you adding it to mine?
I think we need a much better reason to vacate that road than that. Well, I'm sorry, I don't think that's sufficient.
If I don't want it?
Gosh, I mean.
Joe, Joe.
Let me just take time out and say, there's no way that anything that's gonna come out of my mouth in answering your questions is ever gonna satisfy you to the answer. I've already told you that I've had several discussions with people that want this done in most cases.
And who would that be? Can you give me some names, please? Can you verify who this was? Because as far as I know.
If I go back through my files and tell you the ghost that I vacated, but.
I'm requesting that you do that.
Then you write me a letter of request and I'll write you one back and I'll, and I'll tell you.
Because it doesn't affect anybody except Mr. and Mrs. Fick and her mother. Nobody else is affected by, by vacating that.
Truly, that's more of a reason why it shouldn't be a public road.
The reason it's a public road is because people want to have access to people that live there and they pay taxes to make sure people have access to their home. And they have access on their own.
That means I'm paying taxes and I'm having to pay to maintain your part of the road that's been there for fifty years, Joe. Fifty years that's been there. You know, in not ten years, not five years, not a year, fifty years.
If you want to get out of your responsibilities.
Decided by a person like yourself. They said, yes, this is, we'll do it right here. That was their decision, Joe.
If you would like.
And now you want to undo it? That's odd.
If you would like to get out of your responsibilities, then maybe you ought to look for places where nobody needs the road and nobody cares. But this is, you don't just say, I don't want to be responsible anymore. That's your job to be responsible. Not to decide you don't like somebody and now you're not gonna be responsible. Or you don't like maintaining that particular piece of road.
We can end this whole thing if you would just say, I'm dropping this. We can end this whole thing.
That's right. It should, it should have been dropped before, the first time I asked you to. You're, you're just, you're trying to rub my nose in it, Joe. Everybody in the, you know, apparently the whole world's gonna know it. This is ridiculous. It's, it's ridiculous that I'm here.
Joe, it's not gonna end here, okay? It's not gonna end with this meeting. We're just gonna pursue it until we can get some satisfaction. Because closing that is a danger to her mother. You vacating that road, these folks are elderly. They are elderly, they are senior citizens and you're saying, now you maintain it? That's ridiculous.
This is, it is just, it's bizarre that we're here.
And there are senior citizens organizations that aren't gonna like it either.
But we wouldn't have been here, I, I want everybody to know, we wouldn't have been here, except this is the game he plays and, and he's just trying to rub my nose in it.
Well, running, having to sue against you for liability on something happening to Bonnie is probably something the city of Metropolis would rather not have. I would take that into serious consideration because she could go down any day, any minute. She's in her nineties.
There's been many times when I had to go in the four wheel drive because I couldn't get up there in my car.
Does that happen?
That's just not acceptable.
Does that happen just one year or over all these?
Episode at my house, we had to call an ambulance. And if that happens again, the condition it's been in, of course, not now, but just, just weeks ago it was fixed. But for a year and a half before that, it was impassable almost.
You couldn't avoid holes. I will tell you that for sure. You could not avoid holes going up there. If you tried to dodge one, there was another one. There was, there was no way.
Joe, you need to man up and say, yeah, we haven't been doing too good a job on your road. That's all you'd have to say and I'll, and I'll grade your road when I can. That's all you needed to be doing all along. But instead of that, you tell me, oh, we've maintained it multiple times and I've got all a little bit, like you say, and I have pictures showing it isn't true. Joe, all you've got to say is, I made a mistake here and I'm gonna drop it.
What I'm gonna say, do you have any other reasons why you don't want it vacated and we'll write it out?
Oh yeah, I got lots of reasons.
Okay, we'll give you a couple. We'll give you, we'll actually give you.
You raised that about her mother and this.
Okay, we have an elderly mother down there that she needs access to in a hurry, for one. For two, these are senior citizens who don't need the responsibility of maintaining what should be a public road. They need, they need people to be able to get in to them if something happened to them. They need their friends and their family to be able to come visit them. This is not a, this is a no brainer, why that shouldn't be closed.
You're misunderstanding exactly what we're doing here. We're not, we're not.
You're vacating, you're not maintaining, you're leaving it on them and they are senior citizens. They are elderly people who do not need to be out there operating heavy equipment to fix a road that you're responsible for.
But more than that, Lori, say to him what kind of condition the rest of the road is, has been in over this time that you've known us.
I, I don't even want to deal with that right now. What I want to deal with is the issue at hand. And that is that there are several very good pervasive reasons that you should not renege on your responsibility for that road. If he wrote you and requested for you to give him that road, that would be one thing. But he's right here telling you that he's elderly. It's gonna be a hardship on him to maintain it. He, they have elderly family at the end of that lane that they need to be able to get to. Ambulances, deliveries, things need to be able to get through that road. This is not the time in his life for you to be passing the responsibility on to him. And that, that does away with all the personal issues. He pays taxes, plenty of them. He's a good taxpaying citizen. He served this county and, and this community as a guidance counselor in the high school. He's done his share. He does not deserve to have this trust on him.
I could say, I could, I can prove a lot of other things that I didn't, I'm not prepared today to do, but I can prove where you've undercut my fences at another location because a person was building a house, um, at the end of that road, another dead end road. And uh, I had asked for years to have something done to that road and I couldn't get it done. This person starts building the house, gets about two thirds of the way through and he calls you and says, I can't get materials to this road to build my house. Did he, that person call you to say that? Yes or no? Yes or no?
I don't remember.
You don't remember? Alright, the person told me that that's exactly what happened. He said, I couldn't get materials in there, so I called Joe and I called you, Mr. Massach, and said, uh, I told him I couldn't get materials there, so, you know, I needed you to fix the road. So you went in there and built a really good road and in the process of doing that, it didn't seem to matter where my fence was at. You just, I dug, I had driven fence posts and I had a bank there. I'm not supposed to have a fence. The fence has been there for like a hundred years, exactly in that spot. I've had to drive new posts, put new wires, but that's exactly where the fence is at, precisely, straight as an arrow. And you, and where I drive my steel post, you graded into the bottom of where the bottom of the steel post, the T post.
This has just become a monster of an issue and it really shouldn't be.
And now the property owner who farms my place is concerned about the water running off there and then roading it back in the field, which it will. Joe, Joe, just, look, work with me, just work with me, be honest with me, man up to me and say, okay, let's, let's talk through this. We can surely come to some agreement. Surely we can, Joe.
I'm gonna take all of your comments under advisement. Like I told you, I'm, will, I'm gonna have to have another discussion with the state's attorney and then I will make a ruling on this.
Wait, 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 I don't, I don't agree with that. If you're not going to, if you're not going to abandon what you're attempting here, if you're not gonna stop what you're attempting to do here, then I want another hearing and I want to have right to legal counsel and I want to bring all this, all the materials I have to prove why you're doing it. Now, I want that. I should, I should get that.
I cannot schedule another hearing until this one is over.
Yeah, obviously. I'm saying the next hearing, if you're, if you're not gonna drop it, in the next hearing that I want to be able to come and I want to present my evidence.
I am going to make a ruling on this next Tuesday at ten thirty.
I would request that we are present at the state's attorney meeting.
What was that?
When you discuss this with the state's attorney, we want to be present.
It's not a public meeting.
It may not be a public meeting. Do I need to call the state's attorney and ask if we can be there?
Yeah, that'd be a good request. So, that's a sensible thing.
You can ask him.
I will do that.
But, but I don't want you to make a decision without me being able to present all this evidence that I have, that, of what's going on.
Well, that's what we do with the state's attorney.
So, so, you know, if, if you think you can do that, I'm saying right now, I don't want that done and if you do that, you're doing it against my wishes. I want another opportunity. If you, if you're gonna proceed with this, I want an opportunity to present all of the data that I have.
When are you planning a meeting?
To refute all the things that you say are true. And I can do it, Joe. I've proved today.
With the state's attorney?
I've gotta schedule a time with him. That's why I'm giving myself until next Tuesday to make a ruling on this. I've got to adjourn this meeting until next Tuesday, ten thirty AM.
May we request that you let us know when your time is scheduled with them?
With?
When you schedule your time with the state's attorney, we would like to know when that is, so we can address the state's attorney and ask if we could be present.
Well, no, because I mean, the state's attorney is my attorney. It's private meeting.
Wait a minute, the state's attorney is your attorney?
He's my legal counsel as county engineer.
The state's attorney means he's also my attorney, doesn't it?
That's right. And he's paid by the taxpayers and he is not your attorney.
He's not your attorney, Joe.
He is my legal counsel here at the highway department as county accountant.
That doesn't mean he's your attorney.
He is my advisor.
Yes, not your, not your attorney and not ours, because he's just as much our attorney.
Take my words and twist them into what you want. I don't know. He is my advisor. He is the attorney for the county.
You said he was your attorney.
He's attorney for the state.
For the county. I am the county engineer.
You may be, but these are county residents and he is also their attorney.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
He is their state's attorney. He is not their personal attorney.
He's not your personal attorney.
He's not your personal attorney?
If you guys sued me or, by person, you would have to retain your own attorney. The state's attorney would be my representation.
Not if, not if it was a suit against you as a personal person.
You cannot sue me as a personal person.
As an individual. If I sued you because your dog bit me, the state's attorney would not be representing you.
Well, you're right. We're not talking about my dog biting you. We're talking about a county issue.
That's right. And he represents the county.
And he is my attorney here as the county engineer.
He also represents every person in this county.
He's your attorney. He's not your attorney, Joe.
He's not paid by you.
We can't agree on even something as small as this.
He's not your attorney, Joe.
He is my attorney here.
He is the county's attorney.
Exactly. He's the county's attorney, not yours.
And I am the county. I am the part of the county. No, you are not. You do not work for the county. You do not work for a public agency. He does not represent you as a public agency.
No, I, that represents me as an individual.
That's right.
He does not. If he went to court, he would not represent you as an individual.
No, he wouldn't. But he represents his interest when he convicts or prosecutes somebody.
You guys are talking about something completely different. I represent you as an individual to our county engineer.
Um, but we would like to know when you have a meeting. Please note this, I'm requesting that we are notified when he has a meeting with the state's attorney.
If you proceed with this, then I, then I have another opportunity to come in and, and present my information, right?
You have an opportunity with the state's attorney and that's why we want to be there for the meeting.
You will have another opportunity if we have to proceed with this.
If you proceed, I'll have another opportunity to come in.
Because there has to be another public hearing.
Yeah, okay, that's what I want to know. I can come back and present what I have. That's, that's part of the law. Well, that's what I'm asking, you know, I, I'm, I'm kinda curious of how things work here and as you might well imagine.
Can we access the, uh, the copies of the minutes of your notes?
Um, when we, soon when we get them done, they'll be public information.
When will that be and how do we go about getting them?
Probably not released until next week.
I just don't know why I have to come out in front of the public with all this kind of stuff that you're, you're dragging me into. I don't know why I have to. Why can't you just do what, what is simple and what is reasonable here? All you gotta do is say, Joe, or say to Robert, I'll work with you. I'll do the best I can on your road. If I can't grow, grow your road, I'll tell you. If I don't have the money for the rock, I'll tell you. But don't, don't tell me fabrications that are so, so out of, out of whack. It just embarrasses me. It does. It embarrasses me you tell me that, because I know you know and you know I know. All you gotta do is just talk to me reasonably and sensibly.
That's not gonna happen.
This, yeah, this meeting is now adjourned.
Will this take it to air?
Tuesday, March third at ten thirty. I will make a ruling then.
Please get all this accurate. It never is when we meet with the commissioners. It never comes out like it was. Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. Well, not feel that way. That's how it is.